In accordance with the open public meetings, PL 1935, Chapter 231, adequate notice that this regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. Just as a notice, board members, applicant professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. And please, applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet at the table when you have completed your testimony. With that, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilman in Barson?
Yeah.
Paul Hauck?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq, Mustafa Mansray, Charles Brown, Carol Schmidt, and Sammy Chabon all asked to be excused.
All right. We need it just by one.
We gotta get that out of the way. Theodore Chase?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
And Chairman Orsini?
Here. All right. Minutes from the regular meeting of January 19th, 2022, for approval?
Well, everybody who's here can, except Mr. Thomas is not allowed, can...
Okay.
Make a motion.
Okay, I'll second.
There you go, Jen.
I second, so.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Paul Hauck?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Any resolutions, no discussion items, public comments? So, this portion of the meeting is for general public comments that are not the subject of hearing tonight. If you have comments for one of the applications that are on the agenda tonight, please save them for the opening of the public for each of those applications. With that, I move to open to the public. All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is open to the public for any general planning comment. No one coming forward, I move to close the public portion.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the first hearing tonight is John Sullivan and Louis Voorhees, PLN 2200007, and Mark Healy will lead us through that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a application for, technically, it's an application for a minor subdivision. What it really is, is a lot line adjustment. This is a lot line that is between two existing homes, two existing properties in East Millstone. Apparently, Mr. Sullivan is, they're in the process of selling the house, and it was discovered that the house currently actually extends over the property line onto the neighbor's property. So they are here to correct that situation. The techni, it does, and sometimes we use the word "technical variances" when they are technically required but are of very little impact. I think this is that situation, that technically, the new lots that would be created, there are two variances. The house, instead of extending over the neighbor's property line, would now be .7 feet from the property line, where I believe eight feet is required. So technically, it doesn't comply, needs a variance, but obviously is better than the existing situation. And then similarly, the lot, one, his neighbor's lot is currently undersized, it would be made a little bit larger but would still be smaller than the 10,000 square feet required. I'll just say briefly, and I think this is a C1, it's definitely a hardship situation existing by the nature of the size of the lot and the location of the home, I think it's a C2, because it's improving the situation, certainly is advancing the purposes of zoning by having the homes each on their own lots. And this is, there's clearly, in my opinion, no detriments because it's correcting an existing problem. So that's, Mr. Sullivan is here, in case you have any questions of him.
Yeah, this seems pretty straightforward, I mean, not like you're gonna move the house, and, you know, it makes no practical visible difference other than adjusting the lot line, so, and improving, well, as soon as you said, so, I think, I'm fine.
And, Peter, should we swear him in, or is it okay if the board has no questions?
Questions, and we've already...
Okay. It is a public hearing, so you do have to open it up to the public.
Open to the public, but...
Yeah, it seems straightforward, so I'll make a motion to open to the public for any comments on this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no public comment or force to comment, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, there were, just, I don't go through them, but there were some technical issues raised by the TRC. The report has been provided to Mr. Sullivan, so we'd suggest those be conditions of your approval.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, it sounds like they'd all be taken care of when you file a new deed, right? I mean, pretty much.
That's pretty much it.
I mean, they'd have to be, or wouldn't be accepted, right? No. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the application with the conditions of the TRC report.
I'll second.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Paul Hauck?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. All right, the next application is Franklin Storage LLC, PLN 21-00018, preliminary and final major site plan with C variances in which the applicant wants to construct a three-story self-storage facility at 297-305 Davidson Avenue.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Jim Stahl, S.T.
You got to speak into the mic, nobody can even hear you.
Oh, I never had that problem. I'm Jim Stahl, S.T.A.H.L., former Boris Golden, Foley, Vignolo, Harmon, and Stahl. People sometimes confuse me with Peter Lanford, I am not Peter Lanford, I'm Jim Stahl. I think our publications...
Mr. Chase and I go back a long time. And I think our publication and notices are adequate, Mr. Vignolo, I would expect. I was hoping that Mark Healy could do the same with my application as he did with the gentleman.
You're going to be so lucky.
Sorry.
All right, I have a number of witnesses. I have Mr. Ardmann, Mitch Ardmann, who's our engineer, I'm gonna put my client on for a few minutes, and then we have our architect, who's gonna just indicate, again, briefly and efficiently, the elevations, construction material, et cetera, and a sample floor plan. Foley, could you come up here, please?
If you could raise your right hand for me. You swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Troy Cooley, C.O.O.L.E.Y., first name is F.O.Y., and I'm at Chatham, New Jersey, Ben Orchard Road, Chatham, New Jersey.
May I proceed?
Yes.
All right, Foley, I'll call you by your first name, because I haven't offended you yet. You are the founder and the CEO of Access Storage, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you have approximately 24 sites within New Jersey and Pennsylvania, is that correct?
It's, it's 20 sites in New Jersey, 23 total. The others are in New York and Connecticut.
All right, so you do have some modest experience with the self-storage industry, is that correct?
I've been working in self-storage for over 40 years.
Don't tell us your age. And the one we're proposing tonight is a three-story facility, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm just gonna ask you a couple of operational items. You're going to have the normal key or FOB access, which will indicate the time dates that clients come in, is that correct?
Yes.
And of course, they will be locked, and if someone doesn't pay, under the regulations, state regulations, you will then change the lock until that is taken care of, or sell off the material, I just want, it's gonna be traditional.
Traditional, yes.
And the, your hours of operation, remind me again, what are we gonna do, Monday through Friday?
Nine to six, Monday through Friday, nine to five on Saturday, and 11 to four on Sunday.
And as I asked you before, there will be a receptionist or a manager in the office, is that correct?
That's correct.
And from time to time, there'll be someone else on site who may assist him or her in connection with litter patrol and picking up and maintaining the site.
That's correct.
And I gather that in all your years of practice, you have never had a problem being, anyone complaining about the way you keep your facilities?
No, never.
Well, I would be surprised. And you're also, we're gonna have, the second person may be there from time to time, there also is gonna be an emergency telephone number posted in the office for purposes of real emergencies, not I have to get into my unit and get my wedding album out, but I have to get a real emergency, fire, smoke, or something else.
That, and we are connected to a central station also.
Central station alarm, and it's a sprinkled building?
Yes.
And it is a climate-controlled building?
Yes.
And it'll be consistent with your other operations?
Yes.
That's all I have of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
All right, what we'll do is, we'll let you get through all your notices, and then we'll turn it over to the board for any questions.
Thank you very much. Mitch? Wait a minute. Right. I didn't read the note. All right, why don't you stand, raise your right hand?
Do you swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
William Mandara, M.A.N.D.A.R.A., home address or business? Business, two, oh, we just moved, 520 Eighth Avenue, New York, New York. It's no one's business, but people's personal addresses are, so, no, no, I'm just... I don't care, I live in Paramus. I know.
Oh, that's where you're at.
And, sir, your profession?
I am an architect.
And is your license currently, current, in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
For how many years has it been, have you been licensed in New Jersey?
Two in New Jersey and almost 20 in other states.
Have you appeared before this board at any time prior to this date?
Have not appeared before this board.
Have you appeared before other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Planning and zoning?
Yes, sir.
All right.
He's accepted.
Thank you. I didn't even get my question. Okay, all right, have a seat. And, you know, I don't do Q and As, so I'd like you just to describe to the board, please, current conditions, and then the proposed improvements, including elevations, building material, and a sample floor plan.
Sure thing. So, as you can see, the building is, the words in focus with some space around it. Just bear with us for a moment over there. I'll tell you a little bit about the building while we're waiting for that to come up. It is a three-story, 39-foot-tall building with masonry, decorative masonry on the ground floor, the upper floors are insulated aluminum panels and glass with a flat roof. The building is a total of 127,50,000 square feet with non-combustible construction. We'll have a fully automatic fire suppression units with 173 total self-storage units of varying sizes. There will be a retail sales office on the ground floor. There are two unisex restrooms proposed in the, in the building, and there is signage proposed of 100 square feet total, which is internally illuminated. They're close to the office. Get that up there, sorry.
We're out of practice with live presentations.
Sorry. Yeah, usually, this is our first meeting back live, so...
It works with the zoning board.
So the building materials is decorative masonry along the ground floor of the building, and the upper floors will be aluminum panel, insulated aluminum panels, and that's okay, There are 173 on the first floor, 349 on the second and third floors, and a reason for less on the ground floor is because of the retail, they're all so larger ones.
Can, Mr. Scott, can you use your mic? We can't hear the questions.
And access to the access units, some will be from interior access and some will be exterior?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
And it's contemplated that individuals who use it will park their car in an area or space adjacent to the outdoor doors, and if they're going inside, they would park in a vehicle space if appropriate, is my correct?
Correct, and they would take their stuff out of their car in the loading area and then bring it through the building.
And there's gonna be an area, but I know Mitch will be advising us, where the larger units will be stored, is that correct?
That is correct. Oh, cool. Okay. Well, as you can see, this is the view from Davidson Avenue, as described previously, decorative masonry with some storefront for the sales office, there are some units that are accessible from the ground, directly from the ground, and then these are decorative insulated aluminum panels with glazing. And what you see, the landscaping you see here has been coordinated with, correct? This is, this is what, it might be a few years in the future of growing, but this is ostensibly coordinated with the landscaping, and it is provided under civil engineering drawings. There's the signage I referred to before, so again, decorative masonry in two different colors, a water table, and then the blue, orange, and gray colors are there, and this will be the main entrance to the retail sales office, and this will be the loading entrance for the folks who have units that are internally accessed. I'm not used to using, I apologize. Are you talking about this glass storefront?
Yes.
Yes, those are glass areas, those are basically called light wall, curtain wall storefront type glass.
Thank you.
If we go to the plans, this is what you all have, I believe, the package. Again, this is just the unit distribution, as you can see, a mix of different types of units, access from the inside of the building. Again, this is, it's fairly repetitive of what the floor plans are, and then maybe just go back to the, this is a roof plan, a flat roof, and then back to the elevations. And that's, for the sake of brevity, that's the building of...
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So maybe, maybe just in the interest of seeing time later, in Mark's report, there are some comments architecturally with where the, where the, where the loading areas face the street, and, you know, whether additional landscaping should be used to screen those from Davidson Avenue, and whether the architecture will appropriately address the sides of the building facing visible from adjoining roadways. So I figured, since you're probably going to address your complaints without comment anyway, that we might, so, do we now?
As far as the building addressing, I'm gonna punt on the other one, because that's really better answered by my colleague in the civil engineering. But as far as addressing the street, as you can see, it's, you know, there is that storefront curtain wall glazing area over there with the signage that addresses the street, so it's not, that's, you know, it's not like the rear of the building with nothing on it, so that's, I feel that's how we've addressed that.
Have Mr. Ardmann address the...
No, that's fine, I just, I just noticed that, I figured, well, maybe I can just get that out of the way. Okay.
Thank you. I'll take a seat before...
We have any questions later?
Sure thing. Mitch? Now, Mitch Ardmann's gonna testify both as a civil engineer and as a professional planner, I'm gonna qualify him for both, and then he'll do engineering first, and then he'll wrap it up with the planning testimony. Mr. Ardmann, why don't you raise your right hand?
You swear the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and...
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
First initial F, Mitchell Ardmann, A.R.D., M.A.N., 575 Route 28, Raritan.
So this board is very familiar with Mitch.
So we can qualify him as both an engineer and a...
And if, if nothing has changed with your licensures?
License are good, I just re-up for two more years, so you have me for at least two more years, so...
All right. So he is accepted.
All right, Mark, we're gonna do the engineering first, so as I usually do, I'm just gonna give you a direction, and you run with it. Number one, please describe the current conditions on the site, and then next is gonna be the proposed development. If you forget, which you probably will not, I'll remind you about the question on the landscaping.
Very good. So on the right here, we have Davidson Avenue, that's to the east, north is up on this plan. The site is approximately 1,300 feet all the way to the rear, and approximately 370 feet wide. It's a 10-point-seven-acre parcel, and as you can see, there's a stream corridor, basically, the main corridor is about halfway through the site, there's a second tributary a little further to the west, so the development is really gonna be up on the front third of the property. That stream corridor and the associated wetlands and riparian corridor are wooded areas. The area closer to Davidson Avenue, where we have the proposed building, is presently, had been developed, there was a single-family home, there were some outbuildings where some concrete slabs are still on the site, so that area's been largely cleared, as I said. To the north of us, there is a, an office building, and to the south of us is a hotel site, and you can see all the way to the back is where actually Pier Street wraps around to that corner. The site, front part of it, is, you know, relatively flat, there's a little bit of slope at Davidson Avenue, the site sits down a little bit from Davidson Avenue, and then it slopes more in the rear, but really off of where our prime development is. And the site is in the B1, the business industrial zone.
I'm sorry. Mark, I don't think I missed it, but just describe the document you were referring to.
So this is the same as in your set, the overall site plan sheet two, that's in your set with the one revision date on there, of, correct revision, 10/12/21. I think we can go to the proposed condition now. The color one. There we go. Make a little...
Mr. Vignolo, I don't know whether or not this plan was submitted to the board, and I don't know what, I forget the board's policy on this, but that is, Mark, that is a colored rendering of a prior plan sheet that was submitted to the board, is that correct?
That's correct. So this is the plan, the dimension plan sheet four, that's in your set. Now, this also has some revisions on the plan, and I'll get into, I'll get into the discussion on there, because we had some meetings with staff where we did update the plan to address, basically, there are two issues. One was stormwater issue, and the second was a circulation question. So that was submitted, so I wanted to make sure the plan that we presented tonight, which was sent through the TRC over 10 days ago, is the plan that's on the screen now. So that's a revision date of, can you see that a little better, four? Four, eight, 22.
So why don't we call this Exhibit A1?
Exhibit A1, very good.
Thank you, Mr. Vignolo.
Thank you. So what we have here is what was described by the architect, in brown in the center, that's the three-story building, the self-storage building, the footprint is 40,250 square feet, for a total three-story, square footage of 120,720 square feet. To access the property, the access drive, as discussed, is in the southern portion of the site, and you come in along, parallel to the property line. The office is described as in that front right corner, which is the southeast corner of the building, and that's where the parking is directly in front of that area. There's also a loading area, you can go in, and there's elevators that access some of the units as well, so that's one of the loading areas. The site then works in a traffic flow in a clockwise manner around the building. The gates, as described, are one on the left side as you come into the property, and as you circle around the property as you exit to secure that area, there's a second gate on the right side, or again, the southeast side, which is FOB-operated and all linked into the security systems of the self-storage, as Foley described.
Miss Foley, Foley did say that the security is also tied into the local police department, is that correct?
I believe she did, yes. And so, again, circulation will be clockwise around the building. You'll see on the west side and on the north side of the building, there are oversized parking spaces there, and that's for storing of oversized vehicle, if you want your RV there, a boat there, or similar oversized vehicle, there's space on the site for that. There's a dumpster in the upper-left or northern corner of the property. So that whole entire area, basically from the front back, that, that whole area is fenced. So the gates, as I described, there's a six-foot chain-link fence, but when you get to the front of the property, again, to address some of the site aesthetics and for a better look, and some of the questions that came up on the zoning, that'll be a decorative six-foot-high fence, which will be facing Davidson Avenue, that area. For the other site features that we have, the, the storage areas, again, as I said, besides the one loading area on the south side, there's a similar one on the north side of the property too, for accessing the building. So one of the critical issues that was in the design comments from CME, again, there was a drainage one and a circulation one. So my discussion going forward is gonna be, we'll comply with CME, but those were two thresholds that we want to hit. So the question was, as you're circulating clockwise around the building, and then making the turn out to Davidson, was it too busy at that front intersection? And we had some back and forth with staff, Darren and CME, and then we had a TRC meeting with staff, Mark, and Darren, et cetera, and I think we came up with a, with a good solution to that, and that basically was, the aisles around the building were fairly oversized. There were basically a total of 43 feet of pavement around the building, and we said, you know what, that's a nice, but not a need to have. So we basically slid everything back and took some area out of the aisles on the west and the aisles out of the east, and what that did was that moved that driveway back 14 feet further from Davidson Avenue. And that served a couple of goals and advantages on the property. That basically made that circulation swing work so that a truck coming out could easily sit at the stop sign to go to Davidson and not block the intersection. It also pulled that pavement away from Davidson Avenue, and I'll talk about the pavement in that area as a variance, but it was as close as 21 feet, and now we're up to 37 feet, where 50 feet is required. So, again, that, that solved the circulation problem, and assisted in the setback problem, gave us more room for landscaping in the front to fit that landscaping, and also reduced the impervious on-site by eliminating some of that pavement, which is always a good thing. So that is basically the circulation and the improvement that we show on the plan there. In regard to utilities, water line in Davidson Avenue will bring fire and domestic service into the building. As you heard, it's a fully sprinkled building, so we'll have a fire line, and as requested by Mr. House, we're gonna loop the line, the fire line, around the full property, so we'll have fire hydrants on all the corners, and we'll provide the correct water meter pit to make the water department happy.
Mitch, there's a question for Mr. Orsini with regard to the landscaping along Davidson's...
Yep. So the landscaping, as you see on the plan here, that was kind of the focus of the updated plan that we have. So we have the street trees, as you see, along Davidson, and then with the new room that we have, and to supplement the plantings, as Mark noted in his report, we put a full row of evergreens there. So there're gonna be 23 Norway spruce put along that frontage, and there're gonna be six to eight feet to start. So we knew we wanted not just four to five footers, so we started them at six to eight. As you heard from the architect, the rendering showed them growing up a little bit, but at, at that elevation, either a walking public or a driving public will have a good screen in front of that. So I think that meets kind of the goals of what was sought after for the screening, even though we are requesting that variance. even though we are requesting that variance. Then around the rest of the property, you can see we have shade trees around the property. We have a hedge between us and the neighbor to the south, and a couple ornamental trees as well to, you know, give a little more color to the site. For lighting, lighting primarily off the building, there'll be LED lights, there'll all be downward throw lights, and keeping the lighting, yep, there's the, you can see little point plots there. This is the lighting plan sheet seven, which is the same as in your sheet, in your set. And so we have good lighting. The only other pole light will be one out of the street, and we've reduced that to just 20 feet high, because we really just wanted to get that intersection lit, and the rest has good lighting around the full property.
Mark, Mitch, if I can, I try and anticipate questions that may come up. What is the duration of the lighting? In other words, does the lighting decrease in number of units for security at later time? How are we doing that?
We typically do. We haven't worked that out with Foy yet, but usually just the security will stay on after hours. So we, yep, so that'll be the plan. The hours will, we'll work out the timing on that, but yeah.
I have another question. Hopefully it's not, we don't have exterior cameras for any reason.
There's security.
Other security?
Just at the, yeah, there was some security camera. Yeah, just that.
Every detective show I watch, you know, everyone's got cameras all over the world now.
That is right. The last item I'd like to address is the stormwater management, and again, there was one threshold question in the CME report on that. So big picture on that, DEP has had best management practice, and you've heard me go through that many, many times, and that's been in place for probably 20 years. About a year ago, they updated those regulations, so we're all kind of working through those regulations. So there are several comments from Darren, from CME's office. We did have a couple of good lengthy discussions with him and his staff, and were able to work that out. So you see in the west side to the rear of the building is our proposed bioretention basin. Basically, all the roof and all the site development will be piped into that basin. We will handle the peak runoff rates. It'll store in the oversized basin. A small office will let it out slowly per all the DEP Township and DNR canal regulations. Water quality will also be addressed. The runoff will filter through that bioretention medium and improve the water quality before it's discharged to the stream. So the main question that came up is, these are called, you know, does it qualify as a small basin? And that's the question in there. And so once we went over the regs with CME's staff, they did agree that we met that criteria, so our report was good and we were correct on that. And then we agreed with them, saying there is more data, more tables, besides just our output data, basically, some more computations and data that we really need to provide to them that's kind of buried in the calculations, but, so we went over that, and I think we're all in agreement that now that we've addressed that one threshold question of the base, the small basin criteria, and the rest, we can agree to meet. So not be any, any issue with that. I think that really addresses the site. I'll go, address variances and, and some staff reports. I think that hits the, kind of the site plan questions themselves.
I think we're going to wait until you are done and then open it up to the board for all the witnesses.
Um, yeah. What we could do, if you want, is since Mitch is there, you know how we do this, right? Anything you want to discuss in the reports that you can comply with or want to bring, we assume compliance unless you tell us otherwise.
Correct.
So since most of the reports deal with Mitch's area of, areas of expertise, maybe we should go through them.
That's right.
If that sounds okay.
And then he can go into the planning testimony at the end.
Sounds good.
Well, we'll start with, with Mark's report, and basically the variances, which I'll jump to in a minute. I have discussed, though, how we did improve the, basically the variance condition by moving the pavement back and by the additional plantings we're getting to, but I'll be more specific on that. So if we jump to basically page three, um, the one question talked about, could we incorporate any more planted islands? And Mark noted the northwest and northeast corners. We could do that. The only thing I would say is that I think we've addressed the front pretty well. We also have a wall intersection there, which helps to kind of hide that corner a little bit. And for circulation of vehicles, no plowern, et cetera, since they'd be relatively small corners, we would look to keep those open. I mean, if the board really feels that it would be a betterment to the plan, we can, we can talk about that. But I think with the kind of updated landscaping, and especially this view through here, the other one had the solid row of evergreens, but the walls still the same in these extra plantings, I think we have that covered pretty well. So we'll give that to the board.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just comment on that, too. I think I would agree with Mitch. I brought that up in my report because it is a design standard, but I think trying to squeeze, especially since you've tightened it up already since this last report.
Right.
I think to add more landscaping in those two corners, I think you probably need that circulation room on the site for the vehicles that are going to be going around that building. And I agree, I think they have, this exhibit that they're showing, or I should say, on the other exhibit. Again, does add more landscaping than was on the original plans, has increased the buffers around the building, so I don't personally have an issue with that comment.
Very good. Comments for, items four and five are just comments, and that's fine. Whatever we don't plant on-site, we will contribute to the tree fund. Item six addresses a couple of ordinance issues also. So bicycle parking, which are spaces which I've been here a lot, I think, you know, we incorporate them when we feel it's appropriate. As being a self-storage, people aren't going to bike too much big stuff here, so this is one that I would say that's probably, you know, not a real necessity on this.
You're probably lucky Charles isn't here, because he would say the employees may bike.
Employees will still bike.
Yeah, and, and, you know, hopefully I'm doing him justice, but I mean, I would say that if they did, I mean, probably park their bike in front somewhere, right?
Yes, because if there were a significant amount of points, one, two max, they could probably, I won't tell Foy, but they'll put it in the office when.
I'm pretty confident no one who's using one of these units is going to bring stuff on by. But Mitch, the rest is common, is if you're going to comply, like, for example, the electric vehicle, the electric vehicle start charging stations, we always used to ask about those, or at least have the infrastructure in place that they can be put in on a later date.
The plan was just the infrastructure for this. Again, we don't see, the people who are going to the units are really going to pull around the side and not those spaces so much, so we wouldn't be looking to put in a full charging at this time.
Well, I mean, now, I guess, it has to comply with the planning law, which didn't used to be, because it's PL 2021, so it's very recent. So maybe we don't have to ask about these anymore, since it's basically planning law, put them in or have them make ready.
All right, so we'll follow that.
Okay, so all the P is interior units presumably are expected to park in the parking spaces.
They were, mm-hmm. They, there are, a lot of them would go to, some would come in the door to the interior. There's also the loading area, if they're on the upper floors to go to, but they could be parking in those spaces. Yes.
And what I can say, I think if you have a north door, you also ought to have parking spaces, cars to unload there, instead of having just the diagonal spaces for residential vehicles and so on. So that if somebody has, if their unit is in the north building, they can, door up in the elevator that you've got, get there into the building. Mark has commented that, that the parking extreme.
There's, there's two loading areas to address that. There's one on either end of the building, on the, as you can see in plan north and plan south, there's one, and each has a loading area for people to come in, so I believe that addresses that.
Is this a real time to talk about the spaces in Mark's report? Because I just want to, you know, there's a couple of places that say, you know, the ITE Traffic Generation Manual, supply of 12 everyday spaces versus the six you're providing. You're providing 24 long-term vehicle spaces.
Right.
And we're always happy to minimize parking and impervious coverage. However, I just want to ask if you really think that six is going to be enough for everyday use? Would you want to, I mean, if people are parking there long-term, those spaces aren't going to be available. Are you really going to have 24 people parking large things there long-term? Or are you basically going to be able to testify that people could use some of those as everyday spaces?
I think a little both. Some of them will probably be available, but also people are really going to just pull up, so on the outside units, people, you know, as you go, you just pull up, those are the garage units there. So those really are going to serve as, as people are going to pull up to the unit as kind of de facto areas to park there. And I think, you know, as Foy said, that besides the first move-in, you know, the ITE is pretty good on most things. This, they really seem to overstate, based on, you know, what we've gone through with Foy and her team here, and a lot of years of seeing these things operate, that we feel that six, you know, could we put a couple in if needed? Or, you know, we could show some banked in some other places here, but I.
Before I back, oh, there she comes. Go for it.
I just like to make a comment about how much traffic we actually get. For a facility of this size, I expect one move in and one move, one move out per day. And then I expect an average of three visits, no more than three visits an hour. So, I mean, we, self-storage has such a low traffic level, we're just not going to have a lot of vehicles who are visiting their things at the same time, you know, so that, you know, people, okay, we've got a entrance, lobby entrance here, we've got an entrance over here, an entrance over here, and an entrance down here. So somebody comes in, they come in here, they rent the unit, then they drive around, say, to the back, they park right here, their stuff comes out of the truck, goes on the elevator, goes upstairs. Or if they're in a unit that's, the door's on the exterior, they just park right in front of the unit.
But so, based upon your experience with all these 20-some units that you have, would you say that, and it's not an expert opinion, but it is some of a professional opinion, that this parking is adequate for the types of your operation?
Absolutely, yeah. People don't come into the office, except to rent.
I'm sorry. How many people are you expecting to serve? Individual, the unique individuals?
Unique individuals, even the entire building?
No, yes. Of all the units that you are going to rent out, how many people are going to be renting them? In other words, you know, is it going to be 100 people, 200 people?
No, it could be 600 people. But some people move in, they leave their stuff for two years, and then they come out and they move, and they move out, and they never visit.
So any facilities of this size that you might have?
Yes.
Do they have, the statistics that you just shared with us, is that consistent with those facilities?
Yes, yes. That's where I, that's where I get that information.
I mean, my point was, similar to what Councilwoman Rousey is, that, you know, the parking, you see your overall total parking is very consistent with self-storage applications that we've dealt with, a number of them. I was merely trying to distinguish between the six every day and the 24 long-term, and if you happen to have a busy day, would some of those, would some of those long-term be available for short-term use? And the answer is yes, I suppose, if they're not occupied.
If we needed it, yes.
But I'm actually more reassured by your answer, Foy, which is that if you were renting one of those units, you're not going to park in the parking space per se, you're going to pull around to the, where the unit is, or pull around to where you offload. Therefore, you're not really using a parking space per se, right?
No.
In that instance, so that makes me actually feel better, because you're not really using the parking spaces for the people that are coming in, they're going to pull to the unit or pull to where they're offloading, so.
Right.
Thank you.
That makes, that makes more sense, because when we hear parking, we figure, well, that's where you are parked when you're there, but it's actually not. You may park there, you're going to the sales office and rent the unit, and then you're going to be on your way, not use that space.
That's the typical operation, correct.
Mitch, take us back to where you left off.
Okay, so, so that's the parking. We talked about the EV for the sidewalk also. So again, I don't know if sidewalk up to Davidson Avenue or along Davidson Avenue is something that's critical for this operation here for the self-storage, again, by the nature of the use that we have here.
I turn to you, Mark. What do you think? I mean, I don't, I don't know that Davidson Avenue has a lot of uses that require that kind of thing, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was looking at the aerial photo. I mean, that whole corridor is pretty much fully developed. This is really the only undeveloped site in that corridor, and I'm not seeing, you know, presently, there's not really any destination uses, you know, no retail, no residential to connect to retailer. It's basically warehouses, hotels, and office buildings. So I would think this would be kind of a sidewalk to nowhere.
And at least in the short, at least in the short term. Piece of sidewalk, there's no, no sidewalk on this stretch, so.
Right. You know, and unlike other, you know, warehouse and other applications over here in the Elizabeth Avenue area, where there is retail in the area and people may want to go there.
Right.
There isn't in this case.
Very good. Item nine is fine. We'll make sure that the lighting is all demonstrate compliance there, and obviously 10, the COF fees are what they are. For the CME report, there's only two items. I mean, I think I hit the threshold items before. Item five, only to restate, just because I'm saying we're going to comply, so on B5, we just went over those in Mark's report, so with the caveat that those won't be required with sidewalk or bike parking in B5. And then, just to address, and, you know, I'll talk about a little bit in the waiver of variance under F6. So we've really, this talks about the township's stream corridor. As I stated, we have overlapping corridors. There's DNR, there's DEP corridors, and then there's the township stream corridor. And really, for each of them, the really only impact from the retention basin is the discharge pipe, which has to go to the stream, and so does technically affect the corridor. So just a matter of course, we'll be needing a waiver to place that pipe within the stream corridor.
But there's no major intrusion or construction or anything in this stream corridor, other than that, right?
That is correct. Yep, and we've.
Just the, just the pipe that has to discharge the water to the stream, so by definition, you're disturbing the corridor, but.
That's correct.
Emolition plant, those removal, 30-foot diameter, 30-inch diameter maple tree, which is actually in the stream corridor, in the buffer of the stream corridor. And I just wondered, can you possibly save that tree?
We, as you know, we do know that the larger trees are critical, and you keep a good eye on that, so what I would say is that at this point, I don't know if I could promise that, but I would gladly take a look at it and work with Mark and staff to see if, you know, I'm not sure at all, see if the, if the drainage are grading, if there's any way to work around that, but all I can say is we'll, we'll effort to do that. But it may be at a critical point on the drainage where I'm not sure that we could.
Well, it's presumably just in the area with the downslope from the west side of the detention basin, the outside of the detention basin.
Okay.
And also, and I can't tell exactly, it's pretty close to where you're proposing to put the outlet line from the detention basin, but surely you could move that a few feet north. north.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, that would have been my question, what was causing you to want to remove that tree? And if it's the outflow pipe, that could move. The only two other disturbances, according to F6 that are in that quarter, are manhole...
...definitely on what you paid for the shade tree.
And the riprap apron.
Right. Yeah, and the manhole is just for a drop in grade there. I would like to say yes, and if not, if I can, you know, work with, you know...
Well, it's all within your, your tree calculations, right? It's all reflected there.
Yeah, it is covered in there, so if we...
Or there was 75, you're putting 39 on site, you'll contribute the rest.
Right.
And so this maple tree would have been calculated in when you did the tree survey. That said, if you can save it, I would encourage that.
Okay. We'll make an effort. And as far as staff comments, the rest of them, John House, Fire, and any other comments, we will, no issues, and we will agree to all those.
Okay. That's good.
All right, Mark, why don't you just, Mitch, why don't you just close with your professional planning testimony?
There we go. Okay, so as described, and again, outlined in Mark's report, there are the two. There's the parking setback and the number of stalls. The parking 50 feet is required. As described, the revision to the site design lessened that impact from originally from the 21 feet minimum, now we're at 37 feet. I also want to point out that it's not the whole length that is at that stretch. We're basically, if you go to the color one again, thank you. We go from, the narrowest is 37 feet, and then by the time you're at the northern end of the building and the parking and that driveway, it's 57 feet. So it's really the center section. So out of the 370-foot width, it's just 140 feet that we are encroaching in that. And I think this can be approved under the C2 variance standards, and I'll review the benefits to support and any detriments. Again, as requested, you saw the rendering that the architect submitted, showing the screening of the plantings to the building and what that would look like from Davidson Avenue. You saw, described the plantings that were proposed to put in that area. The other issue is the placement of the loading docks facing Davidson. That's unavoidable for the nature of the design of the storage facility with the outside roll-up door access. And again, we've screened as practical with landscaping and the decorative fence is noted, and on the upper right corner at least, with the wall, that will be provided. The architectural plan also showed the face of that building. It's not just a blank wall on that side, I thought, you know, for the board's discretion, but that, that's a nice rendering with the color contrast, with the, with the light and glass corners on the building, that that was an attractive building for the zone. I think the benefit is to allow, basically, this property, which is noted, is constrained and reared by the streams and the wetlands, to be developed as a permitted use in the B1 zone. Again, regarding the zone standards, we're well under all the coverages. The max FAR permitted is 0.5, and we're half of that at 0.25. Lot coverage, the max is 50%, and we're all down at 8.6%. The max impervious is 60%, and we're basically a third at 19.4% proposed. So these numbers reflect a limited impact of the lot in total in relationship to the zone, but also describe kind of why we're pushed a little forward on the property. For these reasons of the landscape screening provided and the good architectural design, as well as the low site impact, I believe the project will create a, will not create any substantial detriment to the public good. In regards to the M L U L, I believe the purpose is C, providing light, air, and open space for basically the large portion of the property that's undeveloped, is furthered, as well as purpose G, sufficient space in appropriate locations for this use, also furthered with this project. For the parking variance, as you heard Foye describe in her testimony, this is really what is good and needed for the project, the six dedicated stalls plus really the loading areas and the areas in front that will really be used when people come to deliver and pick up their goods. So from a practical standpoint, even though the variance is required, we have those spaces and then potential overflow in any of the large parking areas, the long spaces that are not used. Again, the benefit is from just putting in more pavement is to reduce the impervious areas. Once again, I believe the same land use goals are furthered, as I stated, C and G, by allowing this development, and I see no substantial detriment from the diminished number of parking spaces. So basically, in summary, I think the variance can be granted, and again, in my opinion, without substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and ordinances, and for that reason, for the reasons that I stated, and the enhanced landscaping that we provided.
Well done. I don't know whether Mark could have done any better. Mr. Chairman, that's our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Does the board have any questions or comments for any of the witnesses in the applicant?
Chairman, just one question. Now that you've added that, the additional landscaping in the front, is, is the monument sign going to be visible? I'm wondering if you might want to, to look at that, because it might be in the middle of the...
I thought we...
I'll use the mic, Mitch.
Yeah. So let's put it this way, if I, we will commit to the number of trees I have shown. If we need to slide them a little bit north to make sure that that sign is not blocked by a tree, we'll do that.
My second follow-up question would be, you know, the, the distance between your property line and the curb in that location is probably 20 feet.
Exactly.
So I'm wondering, do you, would you want to request a setback variance for that sign? Move the sign a little bit closer to the street? I mean, the sign is a relatively low monument sign. It's certainly not a hot, a large, tall, obstructive sign. Yeah, I think if you were to put it pretty much on the property line, you're still going to be 20 feet off, and then it might, you know, you're less adjustment to landscaping. I'd kind of move it in front of the evergreens.
I think as we did with the site design, the township planners helped out with a good solution. I think that's a good idea. Often, as you'll see on streets, the right-of-way is just 10 feet behind the curb. In this case, it's, it's basically 20 feet, the way the road was set up back when. So I would say, yeah, maybe set it a foot or two off the right-of-way, and because, for the variance, again, because of the setback, it'll have kind of the intent of a standard setback from the property line, so I think...
So, Mark, what's the, what's the standard, and what would they be going to?
Well, the requirement is 10 feet off of the front property line.
And you want it to be what?
Well, they're suggesting now one or two feet, based on my comment. I certainly think that, I think it's a better design. I think it's certainly a C2, better visibility of the sign, more landscaping in front, and it's obviously, I think, more visibility of the sign to the traveling public.
We'd request, Mr. Vignolo, on terms of the catch-all provisions of the notice and the testimony of Mr. Artman.
That's fine, but if one of you wants to decide whether you're asking for one or two feet, because one to two feet is a really bad standard.
No, no, I'm with you, Mr. Vignolo. Mitch, what do you, what do you think in terms of...
Let's look at it. For construction purposes, I'd say two feet.
Good catch, Mr. Vignolo.
Any other comments or questions from the board, anyway? All right.
This one, I'm somewhat concerned about the planting of the bi-retention basin. I sort of get the impression you're just buying 15 pounds of a mix designed for detention basins and throwing it out and hoping it grows. Is there any way we can develop a bond or something to require to, you know, really get it to grow?
That is part of the, in specific, the bonding. As you know, they've changed the state statute for bonding, but one thing that's in there that hasn't changed is the detention basin has to be fully bonded. That includes any of the plantings that go with that. So I think we are covered under that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good. All right, I'll make a motion to open to the public for any comment on this application.
Second.
One in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Please now open for any comment on this application. If anybody wishes to comment, please come in microphone. I give your name and address, and we'll be sworn in. Okay, I see no, no one wanting, wishing to comment, and close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, anybody, anybody want to make a motion? No, maybe I'll do it. All right, so I'll move, I'll move to approve with the three variances, the parking, number of parking spaces and monument sign setback, as well as all of the other conditions that the applicant has spoken to tonight and agreed to, and all outside committee, the R C C, obviously approvals will have to come, I think. Is there anything more specific I need to put in there?
Nope, I got it.
Okay. That's my motion. I can't second it, so...
I'll second it.
Thanks, Jim.
Councilman Emberson?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnar?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time. I'll now get ready for my second act.
Mike, can I just make one comment about this? I don't want to tie up the discussion or pull on it. Sidewalks on Davidson Avenue, I'm not so sure that we should be automatically ruling them out as ever happening. I understand in this project, there aren't many available, developable properties, and there are no sidewalks. So if they came there, it would have to be through the township. And maybe this should be part of a master plan discussion. But if you drive that street, there are lots of people walking. There are lots of people working in hotels and businesses that are, that are walking to pick up a bus, or public transportation, and it might not be so bad of an idea at some point in the future to consider that, at least on one side of the street.
Yeah, and I mean, we just, not too long ago, had a circulation plan discussion and approval, and I can't recollect whether, about in that report, we had any, anyway, any sidewalks in that report, but that would, that would probably be a place to start. All right, so as we wait for this switch over here for applicants, the next and last hearing for the evening is B S R P 3, logistical acquisitions, PLN 2200001. Preliminary final major subplan received variances in which the applicant proposes to demolish the existing building, a structure, one-story warehouse at 399 Campus Drive in the Business and Industry Zone.
Good evening, again.
You look so familiar. I don't know.
That's what they say. What can I do? I'm here on the James Stahl, S T A H L, the firm of wars, Golden Foley, Vignolo, Harmon and Stahl, on the B S R E P, Roman numeral three, logistical acquisitions LLC, as indicated by the chairman. It's a demolition of existing building, construction of a one-story, 120,001,02 square-foot warehouse. I do want to just preliminarily indicate that this is, there is no present tenant for this building. It is a spec building. Certainly, we believe in the present marketplace, there's not going to be any issue with finding a tenant, but we don't have any hours of operation or days of operation, or number of employees that will be subject to tenancy approval when we obtain a tenant. So if I may start with...
I mean, we might want to, like, during the application, at least set some, some sort of acceptable standard guidelines for things like lighting cutoff.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, landscaping, lighting, drainage...
That's all.
The elevations, the building material. I'm not suggesting, I want, I want to get an approval for the building, but absent from that will be nine to five, one shift, seven to six, working Saturdays, half a day, you know, how many office, that's, those are information we cannot...
All right, no, I mean, we've done many spec applications, and those things are generally worked out after there's a tenant.
Yes, sir.
But we kind of just at least want to make sure that lights aren't on at 2:00 in the morning and things like that. So unless there's anything untoward, you expect, then we wouldn't really have a problem.
I just wanted that to be upfront, so...
Yep, no, I appreciate it. And I like the fact that you'll be using a site, demolishing an existing building and replacing one another. And I think if you couldn't, thought you couldn't fill it, that would probably not be a winning proposition, so.
Where is Mr. Pennell? Oh, there he is. I want you to stand, raise your right hand.
You swear the testimony, you're going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Michael Pennell, P A N N E L L, Stormfield Engineering, 92 Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey.
And are you presently licensed in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
Okay. And for how long have you been licensed?
Two years in New Jersey, five years total.
And your license is still good force in effect?
It is.
And have you appeared before any zoning planning boards in state of New Jersey?
I have.
Did we establish what he has a license in?
Can I say New Jersey?
You said New Jersey, you didn't say...
No, I said professional, I said professional engineering.
I did, you're engineering, so I just wanted to make sure, that's what I thought, but...
I didn't either.
Mr. Arcini, I can always count on the board who's stood in there a little to pick me up.
Peter and I just looked at each other and said, "Oh, licensed in?" What?
I'm going to the board, and I want to favor the board to move things quickly. My mouth works faster than my brain, so I have to slow down. I admit it.
I wanted to feel, actually, the will, man, because it's all of us, right?
Mr. Pennell, would you please describe further aboard what the present conditions are, existing conditions, what the proposed end result is going to be, and the interim issue with the demolition of an existing building?
Yeah. So to summarize everybody with the site, we have this aerial exhibit, which was shown on our cover page. It's just a blown-up version of the aerial map on our cover page. The site itself is located at the eastern intersection of Campus Drive and Cotton Tail Lane, within the Business and Industry District, which is newly created, and all the uses in the area are either office or industrial warehouses. The site itself is bounded to the west by Cotton Tail Lane and Campus Drive, to the north by the newly constructed office building, to the east by the Interstate 287 exit ramp, and to the south by a office park with which the property itself shares a full movement driveway to Campus Drive. The existing site contains a four-story office building, which is primarily vacant. The site itself is accessed by the full movement Campus Drive driveway, as previously mentioned, that is located within a 60-foot access easement, which is centered upon the southern driveway property line and spans both properties. The Cotton Tail Lane, there's one access to Cotton Tail Lane. It provides full ingress into the site with egress movements limited to right out only. Existing stormwater on-site is collected by on-site inlets connected by an underground conveyance system, which, which drain to one of three drainage basins. There's one at the rear of the site, and two along the site frontage. The basin at the rear of the site is inclusive of a wetland area as identified by NJ D E There are two existing signs on-site adjacent to the, to the two driveways. The Campus Drive sign is shared with the office park to the south and will be maintained as part of this redevelopment. There is a, there is a sign next to the Cotton Tail Lane access drive, which will be removed, that identifies just the 399 building itself. The site contains two additional non-conformities that I want to mention here. We have an existing parking setback adjacent to the Interstate 287. Parking lot itself extends 7.4 feet, or as close as 7.4 feet to the Interstate 287 property line. Additionally, the impervious coverage of the site exceeds the maximum, 60% allowable, with 16... of the site exceeds the maximum 60% allowable, with 69.9% of the site covered by impervious coverage. Our office has put forth the application tonight with feedback received from township staff at last, at our pre-application meeting last summer, June 2021. During that pre-application meeting, they did note that this site does experience stormwater issues resulting from improper maintenance of the existing facilities. The site itself, which is shown here on the site rendering. Why do we call this Exhibit A1? So, yes, Exhibit A1, this is a colorized version of the site plan sheet, Sheet C4.
If you're enjoying it, I'll make that A1.
So the proposed development will demolish the existing four-story commercial building and construct 120,000, 102-square-foot warehouse building inclusive of 7,500 square feet of office building. There will be 21 loading bays located at the rear of the site within 130-foot truck court area. As, as we discussed with city staff at our pre-application meeting, this does not meet the requirements for loading areas within the township ordinance, but is in conformance with industry standards, and it, and does allow access as shown in the truck circulation plans within the planset submitted to the board. The site itself will utilize the existing footprint of the existing development to minimize any additional impervious coverage areas. The site itself will be within those, within the existing impervious coverage areas and does include a 20-foot improvement on the landscape buffer to Interstate 287. The front of the building, in between the warehouse and the Cotton Tail and Campus Drive right aways, there will be a 79-space parking, parking lot for employee access. Within this 79 space, one space will be dedicated for ride-sharing and shuttle drop-off and pickup. Access to the site will, will be provided using the campus, the existing Campus Drive full movement access, which will provide one access to the employee parking area, and then a second emergency-only access located adjacent to the truck court area, which was requested by the fire prevention official, Mr. House. The Cotton Tail Lane driveway will be expanded to 54 feet, but will be striped so that 36 feet will be provided between the two striped areas, which is in compliance with the township ordinance standards. The 54-feet width between curb lines does exceed that area, but those areas are going to be striped out to allow for, for, to allow for truck turning movements. Additionally, additional striping will happen in Cotton Tail Lane to provide a left-hand turn lane into the site. This, this turn lane was designed in, in compliance in, under the direction of the township engineer, and is provided in the queuing will be discussed by our traffic engineer. Traffic will be handled internally to the building with pickup occurring a minimum of once per week, but possibly more depending on the tenant for the spec building. The existing sign at Campus Drive will be maintained, while the Cotton Tail Lane sign will be removed and replaced with a sign that is compliant with all dimensional requirements of the townships, of the township's standards. The proposed storm design was put together with the idea in mind that the site does, flooding issues do occur based on the improper maintenance of that site. So improper maintenance of the basins resulted in, one, the rear basin has now become a wetland, so we will not be going any further into that and will just be providing general maintenance in line with an NJDEP general permit one for maintenance of a stormwater facility. The frontage basins are to be expanded and improved to bio-retention basins to increase storage and reduce runoff rates to the, to the Cotton Tail Lane stormwater system. That existing system floods because the erosion of the basin has allowed the high point of the burn of that Cotton Tail Lane basin to be lower than the, the overflow area for that basin. So by improving the storage and raising that basin back up, we will be able to eliminate that overland flooding condition. Utilities are available adjacent to the site and we will obtain all necessary utility approvals. Lighting is provided by a series of pole-mounted and building-mounted lights. Our, our design, which had 30-foot mountain heights, is in conformance with township and industry standards. However, we will be lowering the lights to 25 feet at the direction of the township planner and engineer.
Just want to say something. You say direction. I mean, Mr. Healy has made a recommendation. He hasn't ordered us. I just don't want the record to reflect that Mark is directing people, you know, he doesn't need my protection, but I just, I like his, his recommendations that you have accepted. Am I correct?
Yes, I see.
All right, thank you.
I don't want to put any words in Mr. Healy's mouth. The landscaping design has been put together to use all season interest to emphasize the architectural and ecological features of the site. The existing trees upon a site visit were determined to be dead, almost dying or in badly shape, and almost all of them located within the existing parking lot islands. The tree replacement standards require 63 replacement trees, where we are proposing 200-plus new trees on-site, well in conformance with the replacement standards. Our office will address all township and engineering review letter comments, and we believe that this site and all the supporting improvements involved are in line with the intention of the newly created Business and Industry District.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to go through the staff and CME reports now or wait till we're done with the architect and the traffic engineer?
Probably most of the comments are related to, you know, what we're talking about now.
Almost all.
Yeah, I think, I think it's probably a good idea to go through them. And I just had one. It was a suggestion from Mark. It had to do with the illumination levels of the lighting.
Those as well.
Away with those two.
That's number two, that's number two on Mark's.
Okay. All right. That, that was one of the things I wanted to point out, since you already addressed the height.
All right, Mike, why don't you start with the, I'm looking at the memorandum dated March 24, 2022, from Mark Healy to the planning board, and I assume it started with review comments on page two, and the board is concerned with those which we cannot comply with or do not want to comply with for justifiable reasons.
We will comply with them.
With everything?
Yep.
The lighting, all of the issues on pages two, three, and four, one through 12, is that correct?
Yes. I just want to make a note that Mr. Healy did mention the status of the existing trees along Cotton Tail and Campus. Those are to remain and be protected in, in the unfortunate event. One of those is damaged during construction. They will be replaced.
All right, if we can move to CME report. That report is dated March 25, 2022, and is directed to the Township Planning Board from Mr. Russo. And I'm just trying to see where we have to start, but you, you know better than I.
We don't have to go through it either, not either. We're going to go right ahead. We will comply with the letter.
Don't make my job so easy.
All right.
What am I going to do here? All right, so we will comply with all the conditions, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Stahl, I, I, there are some, what appear to me to be relatively significant issues in the CME report, but I think it's probably more for the traffic engineer?
Yes.
Okay, you're going to have him, him or her testify to that?
Yeah, it is a he, but all the engineering comments that would be addressed by a professional engineer have been resolved by the acceptance by the applicant. And then we'll have the, the traffic, the engineer will discuss the traffic issues.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to commend you for the design of the bio-retention basins for using so many native plants, particularly the swamp milkweed, which is, everybody knows is a food for the jalapenos or the mountain butterfly that we're worried about the decrease in, so. And also, which you're naming, putting in specific numbers of specific plants, you're not just scattering seed. So I trust that they will all be well-maintained, but implication is you're using real nursery-raised plants, which should have a good chance of survival.
I, I praise indeed when it comes from Ted, because you don't hear that very often, when he says that the applicant's done an outstanding job, so.
No, I, I, I. David, raise your right hand, please.
You swear the testimony going to provide us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If you could state your name, spell your last.
Take the microphone, please.
And give your address for the record. If you could not, drop me, Mr. Stahl.
My name's David Von Stappenbeck, V-O-N-S-T-A-P-P-E-N-B-E-C-K. Excuse me, I'm with KSS Architects, 377 Wutherspoon Street, Princeton, New Jersey.
And David, you are a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And for how long have you been so licensed?
Since 2009.
And have you appeared before boards in the city, I guess a city, in the state of New Jersey?
Before this board and others.
And you qualify as an expert in architecture?
Yes.
As accepted.
All right, David, you know what to do. Tell us what our proposal is.
So, as was mentioned, we have about 129,000-square-foot building. The facility is designed, as we also have mentioned also, as, ready for two tenants potentially. So there are two entrances along the Campus Drive facade, and you can see the hatched areas here in the floor plan are set aside for two 3,750-square-foot potential office areas. Those are areas can carry once tenants are potentially engaged. Dock positions are aligned along the east wall of, of the facility, away from the public street, facing the Route 287 interchange. We can just jump to the elevation. So, building materials are fairly common for the typology. We have a facade composed primarily of precast concrete with an elastomeric coating, as well as glazing systems of aluminum, coated aluminum and glass storefront and curtain wall that are positioned near the office areas and main entrances, as well as positioned strategically around the perimeter of the building to show some glass to the surrounding streets, as well as allow daylight in to employees along the, what we call the, the speed bay, or the dock positions along the dock side of the facility. The coating is typical for, again, for the typology. It's a high-performance elastomeric. We have a flat, single-ply membrane roof. The roof structure will be designed to allow for future installation of photovoltaics by a tenant should they choose to do that. That's worth noting here, typically, we will engage at a later phase of design with an MEP, Design Build Engineering Firm. We will work with them to position mechanical systems away from the roof edge so that they are not visible from, from surrounding streets. If that proves somehow difficult to achieve, we will provide screening of mechanical units. There are two areas of building signage noted, each of 100 square feet, which is allowed by the ordinance. And that is really my testimony in case there's any other questions.
I wanted to ask you a question, David. The, the building is 120,001,02 square feet, plus or minus, and of that, inclusive of that, is 75,000 or 7,300 office?
That's correct, yeah, within that value.
And just so we understand and the board understands, that, that number may move, in other words, the, the office may get smaller or bigger depending upon the user or users of the building, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And it's a sprinkled building?
It will be a sprinkled building.
Fully sprinkled? And, okay, that's all I have.
I, I don't, didn't notice a lot of, I mean, really, architecture comments in the reports that we need to address, I don't think. It was mostly, like you said, traffic.
There were a handful of coordination comments between my office and Stonefields, as well as just a few comments also with regard to screening, which I think we've covered.
We can, we can comply with all those requirements.
We can.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Great.
All right.
John?
Do you swear the testimony going to provide us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
John Corak, last name spelled C-O-R-A-K, with Stonefield Engineering and Design, 92 Park Avenue, Rutherford, New Jersey.
And what is, what do you hold a license in?
I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Expertise in what area?
In traffic engineering.
For how long have you been licensed?
Been licensed for four years, been practicing for nine.
And have you appeared before land use boards?
Appeared before over 50 boards in the state of New Jersey, including this one.
Thank you.
Accepted.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to, in a side, you could, so you reminded me of something that the board may be interested in. We had one township who gave us a certified list with no names. It just gave addresses, lot and block, but no names, and that's the way we had to serve the individuals on the list, because apparently there was some concern, I'm just giving this for information, that under the, there's some new legislation as a result.
Daniel's Law.
Thank you. Because of the judge's loss of her, her husband, that they're not going to put personal addresses. Now, I don't know if other towns are going to do this. It's a, I don't know how you're going to do it, or how, you know, we're going to rely on a term-certified list, but I just wanted to say that's why this whole issue, and I can't argue of not giving people personal addresses, because someone, you know, I don't even make a joke of it. Someone may not like him, see his personal address, and stalk him. Anyway, I just thought Mr. Vignola might be interested. One town so far, please.
It's, it's come up, it came up in Plainfield, where I have the planning and zoning boards. They, they decided that not providing the names would be how they would solve the problem, because by not providing the names of the police officers, judges, and et cetera, they were thereby identifying those people who were entitled to the protection, but that's not what the law says. So they, they've seemed to work it out. I think it'll flesh itself out in the end, but for the time being, you, you can only work with the list they give you.
I just, I just thought it'd be.
No, thanks, thanks for that. I'm familiar with the case that generated the law and necessarily law itself. I wasn't aware, I don't think I was aware of that.
Yeah, most of, the attorneys are familiar with the tragedy in the individuals. All right, John, go to it.
Yeah, sure. Paul, could you put up the aerial exhibit for me? Want to start there and then I'll move over to the, the site rendering. So, you know, our office conducted a traffic impact study for this project. It was dated September 17, 2021. In that project, as part of our traffic review, we, we conducted a comprehensive field review. We visited the site. We conducted turning movement counts, and of course, we analyzed the, the existing and proposed conditions associated with the development. As you could see on the aerial exhibit earlier presented by Mr. Pennell, we do have a site that's located at the intersection of Cotton Tail Lane and Campus Drive, with existing access out to Cotton Tail Lane via a left-out restricted driveway. So you can make a left-in, a right-in, and a right-out, but currently there's signage restricting that left-out movement. And then, again, access out to Campus Drive via that shared driveway with the office building to the south. Under those proposed conditions, we do intend to maintain those exact same turning movements. We would continue to restrict that left-out maneuver at Cotton Tail Lane with the geometric improvements really to help facilitate the truck traffic in and out of the site, and I'll get a little bit more into that later on in the testimony, talking about the internal site design and the, and the driveway access changes. Both of these fronting roadways, Cotton Tail Lane, Campus Drive, they're municipal roadways. They each have one lane of travel in each direction. Of particular note to the north is the Western Canal Road. It essentially is a county roadway, provides you that access to Interstate 287 to Exit 12, where the, really the majority, if not all, of the, the truck traffic, especially the, the longer or intermediate distance truck traffic, would be utilizing that interchange. So this is a great location for a warehousing type use, for industrial use, of course, that's why it's zoned this way, where we're basically able to efficiently and easily move that traffic onto the interstate where it is best equipped to handle it. So as part of our traffic study, we did conduct counts at Cotton Tail Lane and Campus Drive. We also conducted the counts up at Cotton Tail and Western Canal. We also conducted the counts up at Cotton Tail and Western Canal Road. We wanted to make sure that we're really including the, the two main intersections that are flanking the site and where the, the most traffic is coming to and from the site and to and from the intersections near the site. We did those counts on Thursday, May 6th, in 2021. We did those counts from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., which is considered to be the morning peak period, the morning rush period. And then again, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., which would be that evening rush period. From there, we determined a peak hour of traffic volume. And this is the, the data or the volume that is used within our traffic analysis. In the morning, that occurred from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., and in the evening, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. So pretty typical peak hours, peak times that are associated with the higher volumes in this area. And then we conducted level of service and capacity analysis at those two intersections to understand a baseline condition. We then forecasted out a future growth condition when the proposed industrial use, the proposed warehouse use would be built. We did so with, in two phases. We did so, one, with the DOT's background growth rates. That's the industry standard, the way that the NJ DOT forecasts background growth. But of course, we also needed to include a number of other warehouse developments in the immediate vicinity, which are presently approved and either under construction or still in entitlements, and would also generate their own background traffic. So we, we added those traffic volumes into those existing conditions, forecasted out what we call the no build, which is essentially all two years in the future. What does the traffic look like without our warehouse development? Next forecast, what does the traffic look like coming to and from our warehouse site? We did that using the Trip Generation Manual from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's the industry standard for forecasting traffic for all different types of land uses and developments. And then we routed those trips to and from the site through those neighboring intersections and in and out of our driveways based on the restrictions that we had recommended and we're continuing to maintain. And ultimately, conducted another capacity analysis, level of service analysis at the, at the signalized intersections flanking our site. And ultimately, what that capacity analysis, level of service analysis showed is that there would be, at Cotton Tail and Campus, no significant impact, no substantial impact. And then at Western Canal Road and Cotton Tail, if we could tweak the signal timing, work with the county, move a couple seconds here or there, able to maintain consistent levels of service with the existing and no build conditions. So ultimately, from a traffic perspective and from a capacity impact perspective, this development would not have any substantial impact on the roadway network. It's also worth noting that the office building, should it be reoccupied, if it could be reoccupied at its fullest extent, would generate more traffic than the, those warehouse development. Less truck traffic, but more overall traffic, thus we, we would see a similar type of impact with the existing building that's on the site today. Paul, do you want to move to the, perfect, perfect. So here's the site rendering exhibit that's already been presented. So again, we have.
Just so for the record, John, the way we're referring to A1, if that's how it's been marked?
Correct.
With a blue coloring.
Correct. So this exhibit A1, so we do have that driveway on Cotton Tail Lane, which is being widened to accommodate the truck movements. We also have the connections out to the existing shared access drive on Campus Drive. And one of the things that's not quite shown in the, the colorized rendering, but is provided on the site plans, is that we intend to restripe Cotton Tail Lane at our driveway to provide a left turn lane into the site. And that left turn lane would provide a stacking distance of 150 feet, which is more than the distance of two tractor trailers stacked end to end. And based on the findings of the traffic study, the anticipated queuing there and the levels of service at the driveway, that distance is more than sufficient to accommodate, you know, those truck movements coming in and out of, or coming into the site making that left turn, passenger vehicle movements. And ultimately, that, that left turn lane design provides sufficient queuing on Cotton Tail Lane to essentially remove our left turn traffic from the through travel lane and basically be able to stage them so that way they can make the turns when your northbound Cotton Tail Lane traffic clears, which, given the proximity of the signal, the gaps it creates, it's a pretty frequent, pretty frequent times that there's gaps in traffic there for, for those trucks and for those cars. So, you know, there, there were a few comments in the CME letter about, about that Cotton Tail Lane driveway and that left turn lane access. I think one of the things here that we somewhat neglected to show on the site plan, but we do have the design for, is that full extent of the left turn lane. And at the time of site plan application, we didn't have the full survey, but we do have that now and can provide that. So that, that should, it really should clarify any of the left turn lane design and any additional signage or otherwise that's needed, we're happy to comply with.
So the comment in the CME report that says, you know, the existing driveway is comment eighteen, the existing driveway exit at Cotton Tail restricts left turns, that's existing.
Yeah.
The traffic report reflects the driveway will operate similarly. What you're basically saying is it, it won't, you know?
No, the, the existing, no, the existing driveway restricts left turns out of the site.
Okay.
Right.
And it still will?
It still will restrict out of the site. There's no prohibitions on left turns into the site currently at that driveway.
Okay.
So what modifications will you make to the site plan to restrict those left turn outs?
Certainly going to be showing that signage that restricts it out. It's, we're, we're not necessarily looking to widen that driveway anymore to provide other sorts of channelization. It gets pretty tricky with the truck movements in particular. But signage in particular would be the, the mechanism for restricting that left turn.
Mark, do we get to do a Title 39 on, on a piece of property like this along the shopping centers?
Typically, I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know, I, I don't think that's so common here.
I don't either.
Title 39 is that when the, the police can enforce side, traffic directional signage on the private property.
Yeah, I mean, we've had those discussions and it's practically impossible.
I agree.
So I don't like to ask applicants to comply with the non-compliantable. The best, the best way to comply is through engineering controls on. I mean, you know, we have had this discussion and I, I've actually, you know, we used to do this as a board. Oh, you know, we're, we're going to make sure your garbage truck doesn't come at four in the morning if you were bought a residential use. How the hell are you going to enforce that? So, you know, we try to get away from that and do it through engineering controls. Don't put the dumpster in a location next to somebody's house. That's how you solve that. So it's always the same way is with signage and with the engineering that restricts the left turn. It makes, makes the most sense.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think they would have to work out this detail with, with the board's engineer, whether it's signage, pavement markings. I don't know if there's changes to the, the striping, you know, I don't know if there could be a painted hatched, you know, island to direct the vehicles to the right. I don't want to design it, well, I'm not going to design it, but we shouldn't decide it on the fly here, but that's some different things that maybe they should, they should work out. Mr. Chairman, do you want to continue with, because there are some, again, some, you see, 20 and 21, I think are relatively significant.
Mm-hmm.
And I think when I'm, so why don't I just read them and then if you could provide the board an answer to each of those?
Okay.
All right. And I think you have provided some testimony, but, so number 20, the applicant's traffic engineer should supply calculations for the left turn queue lane along Cotton Tail Lane. The applicant is providing a, a left turning lane of 150 feet along Cotton Tail Lane. I guess that's meaning into your site. There's concern that the truck queuing may block through traffic along Cotton Tail coming from Western Canal Road. Potential restriping lane and shoulder alignment along Cotton Tail may be required.
Great. So, so this item is somewhat buried in the traffic report. If you really dig deep into the appendix, you can actually come up with the numbers that, that they're looking for. So this approach in the left turn lane into the site is a free movement in that you only need to wait for oncoming traffic to clear, right? Unlike a left turn at a traffic signal, or maybe you're approaching a stop sign, where you need cross traffic, or you need the light to turn green. You know, this, this approach and a left turn lane approach is a relatively free-flowing approach, assuming that you do get the gaps that, that the signal at Cotton Tail and Campus provide. Now, within the traffic study, it does provide 95th percentile queues. And this is the measure that we use as traffic engineers to understand peak queuing conditions in those peak hours. And based on the trip generation of the site, the proportion of trucks utilizing that driveway in the site, we're at a 95th percentile queue of well under one vehicle during those peak periods. So most of the time, when you're looking at that left turn bay, you're actually not going to see a vehicle staging there. So, you know, it's, it's certainly designed in accordance with good engineering practices. Essentially, we're providing the stacking to fit two tractor trailers in that left turn lane when 95th percentile queuing would indicate substantially less volume than even that.
I think it's a related comment. Again, it's talking about the left, the turning lane into the site of Cotton Tail. Due to the horizontal curvature of Cotton Tail Lane, additional modifications to the striping and potential advanced warning signage is recommended by the office due to the limited site visibility. The existing striping and curb lines north of the turning lane should be shown on the site plan through the horizontal curve so that, so that it can be further evaluated.
Yeah, we'd be happy to comply here. Essentially, this goes back to when the site plan was submitted and when we actually had survey of that area to the north. So we've done that design internally and we, we can provide that full left turn lane design, show exactly where it, it connects back into, you know, into the double yellow striping. You know, currently you have that hatched core area. Essentially, it's an extension of that width through, and we're basically able to utilize some of the shoulder space that presently exists on that roadway and restripe and keep, you know, keep a good lane geometry that doesn't require curb line widening.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, the only concern that I have here, and I don't doubt the credibility of your testimony, have no reason to, but we have a report from our, from the engineer advising the board saying that they didn't have enough information in what was, you know, provided to them to basically riddle or, or back up what you're saying. So.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the solution is, i- if it's in the report, and, and, you know, no reason, like Mark said, to doubt your testimony, I would just work with CME to make those numbers clear. So, I mean, if, if they're probably not made of traffic engineers, it's general engineering firm, maybe let me dig that deep. They'll just provide it to them. Because I noticed fire, that's why I was looking for the fire report. I recall there was a comment about queuing in there as well. And, and so maybe for both purposes, you would just want to make that really obvious. And that's probably true for comment 21 as well.
Yeah, normally, and I can't say this is the case, but commonly, I should say, when Darren, who's, you know, our main representative from CME, if there's a critical site plan issue, he will normally bring it to my attention and basically say, this probably really shouldn't go before the board. He didn't mention that here. That doesn't necessarily mean that it, you know, I, I probably shouldn't characterize his concern or not, but, you know, I, I think if the board was inclined to make this a condition of approval, these issues are relatively significant. I mean, if, 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 if the concerns raised in here are, you know, come to be true, and, and if there wasn't sufficient queuing in that left turn lane, there's a curve there and you have the third truck and now it's blocking cars from going down Cotton Tail Lane. And that's, that's a significant concern.
Right.
So if they, if they can't make CME happy with that, then they have to come back to this board.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just, I, I actually, you know, I'm not getting a sense that it's a problem that you can't solve just by making that obvious to CME so that what you just said about, you know, you, you won't even see a vehicle or max one, one truck will be there, that you can just back that up.
Well, I was going to, I was going to suggest, suggest, not direct, as a condition of approval, that John, collect the information and highlight the information for CME and if necessary, supplement the information for the satisfaction of CME. And that would be a condition. And as Mark said, if for some reason we cannot accommodate the desires of CME, then we may have to come back on a site plan modification, which we don't want to do, but, you know, if, if we can't make CME happy, then we may have to, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think their concerns are legitimate, right? You would not want trucks staging and blocking Cotton Tail Lane. You would not want that to create issues for fire access. And I think it's just a matter of, you know, showing them and proving that's true. And so, yeah, we can make that a.
So as I tell people, you can't fight motherhood, apple pie, or fire safety.
That's true. Very true. That's why all, that's why all our parking aisles are over standard, right? Because it's not, it's not standard. It's what fire, fire wants. So very, very true. A related question I had, so in a number of warehouse applications that we've had recently in this area, we, we have gone about trying to ensure that, I mean, and it, with this being this close to 287, it's almost a no-brainer, but, you know, weird things happen. And they happen frequently. Would there be good cause to put signage to direct trucks to the preferred route out to 287?
John, I mean, I, as a layperson, I don't see a downside, but I'd have to leave it for John.
I think that makes sense. I think automatically, by restricting the left turn here, the trucks are already headed to 287, but an extra sign or two couldn't hurt.
Yeah. And because, I mean, when we, when we, we have had a lot of warehouses come in because of, you know, the way we live these days, we, we don't shop anymore. We can order stuff online and that requires warehouse. So, I don't know, it, it's, it's going to be a fact of life. We're trying to mitigate them driving through residential neighborhoods. We're trying to, you know, work as, in township to put signs up as a township that, you know, it's a truck route to 287, make that really obvious. And this is one of the corridors from Elizabeth, down that we have tried to implement that.
Mr. Vanyola, how would we treat that additional sign? Can't, we'd have to put it in a set back. We have to, I'm just trying to, to use your thought process to make sure we.
You're putting this on me?
No.
It would be a traffic control sign. It wouldn't be under the sign ordinance.
All right, it's not identifying the use of the business.
It'd just be.
Sort of signage at the exit, just directing trucks to go in a particular direction towards this.
Yeah.
I'm assuming there's something in the, the uniform, manual uniform traffic control devices that talks about the sign, and then that's not subject to the sign ordinance.
Yeah, we, we would comply with, with the MUTCD in that regard, and that, that's a pretty straightforward process.
And, and see, we used to ask applicants and everyone, whichever up and down they would do it, they're going to instruct the people to come to the warehouse that they should drive in a certain way. Well, you can guess how well that worked. So again, engineering controls, probably the better way to solve it.
Put the sign up. Makes sense.
Chairman, I have one question. Can I?
I'm just, I'm sorry.
Graham. So, what are the hours of your study, the data collection study, in the morning and the afternoon?
It's between, so we take our counts from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and again, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then within each of those brackets, we identify the peak one hour, and we use that as our data for the study.
The maximum volume within that window.
Correct, the peak hour, if you will.
Okay, so that's the peak hour of one hour?
Yes.
Okay, because I've, I've traveled Cotton Tail quite often because I, that part of the town. And occasionally, more, often than not, that gets backed up in the morning as well as in the evening. So I just wanted to make sure that you have enough data to supply to CME, make sure they are satisfied.
Yes, yes, we do.
I'm not sure that there's a, a specific answer to this, but I, I do have a concern since there are some traffic issues going in and out of this. If, if the eventual owner of the spec warehouse is keeping in mind those traffic conditions when they're looking to rent the facility to, to end users, well, we're not renting to someone where they obviously know it's not fitting the standard ITE manual for traffic volume. This would be, this would be much simpler for us to deal with if we knew who was using the warehouse. We, we don't. One thing that I am comfortable with, that makes me a little more comfortable with of the 17 or 18 warehouses that we've approved in, in the last twelve months, this is one of the, one of the real small ones. Most of them are 400,000, 500 and, and up. But I know you have to do this on spec, but this, this idea, I don't know how, I don't know that there's a way to deal with it without the, a little concern from the people owning the facilities. But I'd like to see that whoever this ends out, ends up being is, you know, not. this ends up being is, you know, not putting some end use in here that knowingly is overwhelming the traffic.
Well, I would throw this, this curve to Mr. Healy. I mean, there's got to be a tendency review, and if the use is something unusual and excessive, then the code enforcement or the zoning office, you know, may have to step in. I'm not inviting it, but, you know, everything has to be controlled. I mean, if this is a 24-hour operation, and trucks are going in and out every 10 seconds, I'm just being excessive, something's got to break. And Mark may say, wait, there's not enough loading docks, you're going to queue on, out on the road, you're going to do this. The owner's going to have to say, I got to change things. I mean, that's all I can say, because we just cannot speculate as to what's going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, there are, I mean, it's a warehouse, so basically, anybody who's coming in as a tenant who's going to be a warehouse would be approved, but there are situations where staff does have to get involved. Recently, we were involved in a site where basically the site's being used somewhat, as you described, where they're kind of parking everywhere, and we're making them put no fire, fire lines around the building, so they're not parking their vehicles in the travel lane, so the emergency vehicles can get around the site. So, you know, in extreme examples like that, we do step in and make them change it.
Let's say that all the loading docks are full, and that there's eight tractor trailers out on the street waiting for those to open up, and then they move in, and eight more come, and they're disrupting traffic in the community, then the zoning office gets involved. I mean...
I was just trying to bring that concern forward. I'm not, like I said, expecting that there's a solution, and I'm actually hopeful, like I said, this is, this is one of the baby approvals compared to the, to the ones that we've had.
But the market controls some of that, because a tenant is not going to want, and the truckers are not going to want their trucks standing there for an hour, certainly they can't idle, they're not allowed to, or shouldn't be, so the companies are not going to want, you know, their trucks to sit there for an hour or two, charging them by their drivers. I mean, look, I don't know, it's issue...
All right, well, thanks for listening, we need to dwell on it, yes.
I think the evil eye from Mr. Vignola, like to stop talking.
If only I had that power.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just a few more questions.
Sure.
What's the reason for the cul-de-sac bulb in the back there? I haven't seen that feature on other warehouses.
Yeah, that's for truck turnaround. Essentially, should a truck reach the end of this area, they use this cul-de-sac bulb to make that turnaround instead of doing a K-turn.
Question or comments, 23 and 24 in the engineer report. One talks about the access easement that you're using, and maybe this is more for the attorney. It's basically asking, is the easement, does easement allow you to do what you're proposing to do within that easement?
I'm going to have to bring the engineer back, you gave me more credit, I'm entitled to as to that. Do we have information on that easement?
Yes, that is a 60-foot wide access easement that goes across both sites and allows access to both properties from Campus Drive.
Okay, but you're doing certain modifications, physical modifications within it that go beyond just access.
You're talking about this area, like right here?
Yeah, but he's, well, his report's saying there's stairs, concrete landings for doors, concrete curb and drainage improvements within that access easement. So he's asking, are you permitted to do those?
Yes.
Okay, and do you have a copy of...
We do have a copy.
Why don't you give me a copy, so I can share it with Mark and with Mr. Vignola?
I believe we, I believe your office did, and we'll share it again.
You expect me to remember what's in that file?
I do not.
Yeah, there's a, and then 24, asking whether there's shared parking agreements between the two, because there is a shared access, it almost looks like all those office buildings were built together. Are there shared parking agreements between the sites that you're aware of?
There was a shared parking agreement, the, it was not, the spaces aren't being used as part of that access agreement today, so I believe that's going to be extinguished as part of this development.
Okay, so I think the question is, do you happen to know, is, are any of the spaces on this site used for the parking calculations for the other sites?
We do not, but we can investigate and advise to that. The spaces themselves are not called out within that easement. A shared access agreement.
Okay, so, okay, there's a shared, there is a shared parking agreement? Yeah.
Good, we'd have the title binder, because we always get it. I'm going to have to look for the easement and then the shared parking, and I'll get it to you and Peter.
Okay.
And I don't waste the board's time looking through the title binder, that's...
Yeah, no, I think this might fall under, I mean, again, I don't know if, he's asking if it exists. If it doesn't exist, then there's no issue. So I think this falls under the other issue of, if there is a shared parking agreement, and if any of the spaces on this site are counted towards spaces on the other site, there could be a parking, you know, this could trigger a variance for that other site. But that's all if, 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 if.
Right.
So I think this is, this may be another thing where if, 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 they'll have to come back to the board if they're creating a variance, they're just going to have to come back.
Only if the shared parking allows for the use, well, let me look at it. I know what you're saying, exactly.
Well, you'd only have to come back if it exists, and if that other site is relying on spaces on that site, and if the loss of those spaces results in a variance.
I got you, yep. Let me look.
I mean, most simply, note that you're going to comply with that CME comment, and that will cover everything we talked about from 17 through 24, or something like that, have to do with traffic and parking.
Confirmed.
If I make the motion, I may call out these specific things, but it's going to be covered in your agreement to comply with the reports. So, not to interrupt, but are we, where are we on the testimony? Are we done? All right? Because then you don't have any other witnesses, right?
No.
I don't waste the board's time. I found an access agreement, but I have to, before I go blind, I have to sit down and make sure I've got it right, and then I'll get it to Mark and Peter, probably tomorrow or the next day.
So, let me turn it over to the board in case they have any other questions for either of the, any of the... I think we caught all the issues. All right, so with that, I guess I'll make a motion open to the public for any comment on this application. Second from Jen, all in favor?
All right.
Any member of the public wishing to comment on this application, come forward. Any no-takers, move to close the public portion. All in favor?
All right.
So, all right, I mean, overall, this is a good application, like Ted called out, just a matter of a few things to address, but I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions that you're complying with all the staff reports. Call out specifically the provision of the traffic calculations that address queuing on Cotton Tail Lane, and the shared access agreement, parking agreement, if one exists. Attorney, always your attorney. Okay, I think that's all I need to specifically call out, obviously, the variances of the addition of the directional signage for truck traffic, which is not subject to the sign ordinance. In previous coverage, I note that's decreasing by 0.1% from the existing conditions, and all of the other variances that were... Yeah, that was in there.
Are they going to have charging stations?
Yeah, they're going, they're compliant with that.
Okay.
So that's my motion. Everybody wasn't as shy when they were sitting at home in their pajamas, they come back live, and anybody but Jen to second.
Councilman in Barson?
I didn't get to talk much, but I'm a real one, thanks. I'm going to come back.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Paul Hauck?
Yes.
Theodore Dorches?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Well, it's been a privilege to be here tonight. The bad news is, you'll probably see me again in a, you know, a month or two or three, but it's a, I know. But be safe, everyone, please.
Thank you, you as well. Very good job tonight on both of those.
It's a team, it's a people, not me. I'm like a manager of a baseball team.
All right, so we're not going to run away just yet, we're going to have a small executive session, super fast executive session.
It's over.
It's been so long before I went into executive session, I, do I have to make a motion? And we have a, now I'll make a motion to adjourn for the evening. All in favor?
All right.
It's great to see everyone.